Regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, October twentieth to order at seven P M. In fact, we have a full set of planning commissioners. The agenda is in front of you. If you don't have it, are there paper copies or?
Yes.
If anyone need a paper copy, we have two items of table business. One is just general updates and then one item of new business. So let's begin by reviewing and approving this agenda. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so Marty moved and Sarah seconded. Any questions about the agenda? Are all those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? We have an agenda. Motion passes five to zero. How about the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five planning commission meeting minutes? Are there any questions or corrections to those minutes or is there a motion to approve? I think everyone's pulling them up. It's a short meeting, remember?
I'll make a motion to approve the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so Sarah moved and John seconded. Any discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm abstaining from that because I wasn't.
Okay, so we have four yays and one abstention and that motion passes. So we have public comment to the two items of table old business or the one item of new business. I don't see a podium, so rise at your seat or actually just sit. Is there any public comment for tonight? Okay, seeing none, the first item is the Gettysburg Station Project one oh eight North Stratton Street for general updates. John?
So we had anticipated having additional materials prior to this meeting. They have not happened, but we are working with the developer. We were able to provide the survey plats showing their anticipation for right-of-way that will need to be abandoned by the borough. Other than that, the they, there is an approval requirement, approval requirement that must occur in November or another extension. We. One of the challenges that this developer is facing, not only do they have public, private funding, but they also have public funds and I think that may be playing into a lot of this. Especially, they're going to have to go through some pretty lengthy environmental reviews, which may also change the timeline. We'll keep the planning commission abreast of all the changes. Once it hits one year, we would probably recommend either a new application or minimum revisions to ensure that compliance with HARB approvals and zoning hearing board approvals is still possible.
Thank you, John. So are they asking for anything tonight related to that vacation of the right-of-way? And the ninety days does not expire before our November seventeenth meeting?
Yes, that's, that's when you have, at that meeting, at the previous meeting, you made, the motion was specifically to have a recommendation or a action occur in November, at the November planning commission meeting.
Sounds like no action, but any questions for John related to this?
I want to ask you, since you mentioned, you know, are you expecting that it will be a year before? I mean, is it, and I, and on that rate?
I'm, I'm growing a little concerned, honestly. Not that this is a problem with development nationwide, it's just the uncertainty with financial markets right now. The developer's been very upfront with the chat, with the challenging aspect of the project and having this capital stack include public grants, that could delay things. It's just, it's, it's, it's something where by being aware of the situation, I, we just want to make sure the planning commission doesn't think that there's a situation where we're not engaging with the developer or vice versa. It's just, it's taking longer than anticipated.
I guess what I also was curious about is whether or not, it seems like it might be beneficial to continue to table it so that you can have those conversations rather than, I mean, because to me, it seems like we wouldn't want to consider something until there's a more final version of this plan proposed, but is there a benefit to continue having it just like extend out? If, if otherwise you wouldn't be having those conversations?
I, I think after a year, the planning commission should probably investigate how to proceed with the specific application in front of them. Nothing would preclude the applicant from reapplying with new application in the scheme of things. It's an expense, but for that project, very miniscule.
Okay.
And for clarification, when would a year be?
I believe that's April.
That's what I thought, April, yeah. Okay, any other discussion? Our next item is Simrad LLC three five one East Water Street and this we do have a set of notes that John or Chad might want to begin with.
So we did have an opportunity earlier today to schedule meetings with the developer on this project. We received comments from the Borough Engineer and from the Adams County Office of Planning and Development. There are, there's a clear issue when it, as relates to the, what is it? The streetscape enhancement overlay district provisions related to curb cuts. There is an issue, well, there, there's some issues just with their plant sets in general. They need some additional landscaping materials and things like that. There is a building design issue in that there's a requirement for a buffer that's not able to be achieved with the way that the buildings are configured now. This can all be solved. So that's why, I guess we're trying to get a meeting scheduled for later this week. I was going to speak with Chad after this, just to get dates set. But overall, there, we're going to have to have a real conversation about the parking because I'm not sure if the developer is necessarily going to be in a position to provide a product that would meet the requirements of the streetscape enhancement overlay. So that's something we'll be discussing with, but otherwise, yeah, there are, there are engineering issues that Chad can provide more detail.
So before Chad goes through those in the parking from the county, the action tonight would be?
So you, you, you could table the item tonight. It has the ninety-day shot clock that began at the last meeting. So at this time, yes, we would recommend table of the item.
You don't have to take any action yet.
And we didn't just, we, we actually didn't just table the last item, so do we have to table this? Sometimes we do officially make a motion, sometimes we just continue.
You don't have to do anything with that because you don't have to take action on through your November meeting. And kind of the same with this, but if you want to table them both, you can, but.
I think we could just keep moving forward and no one is here from this development in the room.
I do not believe so, nor from Gettysburg Station.
Right, I should have asked that for that too, yeah, so, okay, so then Chad.
Sure, so, and, and, and John hit the high points there pretty well at the end of the day. Would, far from being ready to, to approve this. There are a couple of county comments that I wanted to touch bases with. Once, once we have a meeting with the developer, it'd be nice to hear like some of the feedback from the planning commission on some of these, these items. And then we'll have a chance to talk to their design team and kind of give your feedback and as well as ours. And I'm afraid that some of these things that, that they have to meet, like the streetscape overlay district ordinance, they're, if they just can't, they're going to have to go get a variance or it's going to be a significantly different development at that point, so. The first one that I wanted to touch with is about the driveways. They talk about the, they want the, the parking to be in the rear of the property. And then they specifically had further down in their ordinance, this section, it states, it's a section twenty-seven thirteen oh one one H of the ordinance. It states that new parking areas for residential uses that have no rear alley access, which is this case, may not be located between the front, front building facade and the public street used to address the unit. Provided parking must be location behind or to the side of the proposed buildings. So the key word there is behind or to the side of. What the applicant indicated today and some of the discussions that John and I had with them is that they were hoping to use the garage to fulfill their requirement. The requirement is one space, your ordinance only requires one space per unit for townhomes. So I guess the question is, is a garage towards the front of a building, is that located behind or to the side of a proposed building? That's one of the items for discussion. Do you have any thoughts on whether or not that fulfills the requirement of parking to be in the side of the, or the rear too?
Has this ever come up before that you can think of?
Not that I can recall. I, there's another component to that. I don't want to muddy the water with that. But there's the other component to that is, is that our ordinance currently has a minimum requirement for parking. Of course, we know we're going to some maximums in some like old town, but currently it just says the minimum. So I'm a little bit concerned about the, the availability of parking along that street too. So keep in mind that often with townhomes, that becomes the spot for your mower and your bikes. And you know, your garage doesn't end up getting used as a parking space. The space that they have in front of the, between the townhomes and where the bike trail is going to be is only like ten feet. So it's not nearly enough to park a car. The car, they, what's going to happen is somebody's going to park a car and what they think is their driveway and it's really not, it's really the bike trail. So the bike, the cars are going to be back parked over top of the sidewalk is what's going to happen if they don't get into the garage. And then, so, and then there was an argument, I think, that, that this one street parking is sparsely parked, but I had some Google images that shows that it's pretty heavily parked and that's without the physical therapy, that's without this development. It's already more than fifty percent parked. It's a, it's residential parking permit. You're only allowed to park on the south side on that road. There is no parking on the north side of the road. Like where Gettysburg Glass and those, and the upholstery places are, there's no parking on that side. So just a road, road's not wide enough for parking on both sides, so. It, it, what's going to happen is anybody that doesn't park in the garage is going to be trying to park down the road farther somewhere and that's just for their first car, much less their second car or visitors or something like that, so.
So these will be, they are proposed to be one-car garages?
One-car garages, yeah.
And of course, if they, if they all have front access, then they're taking away the parking on that entire length of the?
If they parked in what they're calling the driveway?
Well, I mean, if they, if, I mean, if they put
The driveway.
driveways into the road, there's not, not going to be parking on the street.
Right, exactly.
So how many of that eliminates ten spots?
Along there, yeah, a couple, yeah, maybe not quite that, but sure, yeah. All those spaces are awesome.
So reactions from the planning commission on driveways and parking?
I mean, personally, if the ordinance says the parking needs to be in the rear or the side of the building, I don't think that fits the definition of the ordinance. Whether I personally agree with that or not, I think just if I'm reading the ordinance, it says rear or side, then I think the parking needs to be in the rear or the side.
I mean, it looks to me like they would have to remove one of the residences to create an access like a road, a shared road, I guess, that would access the rear, but is that something that they've been? Have you discussed that?
Staff has previously suggested utilizing actually the parking directly behind this location at the, of the Spectra Code lot. There are already spaces established. The there, they'd be able to have a shared access agreement with that property owner in theory where they could then utilize that parking. Now, is that a guarantee that could happen? No, because you have, that, that would require agreement from Spectra Code, which they would have to negotiate. We'd probably also require then some kind of deed establishing that easement. The the developer, yeah, they've, they've maintained, at least at this time, that they would like to utilize that front area if, that people will not park there and that the houses, the townhouse design requires larger rear yards. Your staff has not agreed with that, so that's, that's one of the reasons I want to hear your reaction as well.
So, so I don't know if anybody was here for this, but this is maybe fifteen years ago. There was a townhome development approved on this parcel, never got built, never, nothing ever happened with it. And it was actually the next parcel over, there was slightly different lot line there. And they did have an access drive where they lost a unit and came in around. I don't know if they used that same access point that, that they're proposing to be eliminated with this plan or not, but they had a, an access drive that came around and all the parking was in the rear. And then there was a stormwater facility that was underground under that parking in the rear. So that is what was proposed and approved.
Did they know that, this developer?
I'm pretty sure that, that they're aware of that. I mean, I, we had a pre-application meeting with them a long time ago, a year ago. I think it maybe it has been since now, John, and they didn't really submit a sketch plan or anything. It was just, they came to us to discuss this and at the time I gave them some information saying, well, first of all, there was a townhome development on this, so, I mean, it's, it was recorded, there's a recorded plan on this. And then they also, we, I gave them the, the information on the rights of ways in the, for the Gettysburg inner loop bike trail that comes through there, so. I'm pretty sure they're aware of, that's how it was developed or proposed to be developed fifteen years ago or something like that.
It was the previous owner of the property then?
Yeah, that was, I think it, it was like, I feel like it was that, the real, the local realtor.
Dave Sykes?
No, SPG Ca, it's the S from that.
Schaefer.
Schaefer.
Jeff Schaefer.
Yeah. Todd, Todd King was representing them at the time because I remember that's whenever I had that first, first time. This is going back a long time ago, fifteen, twenty years ago, when I first learned that a subdivision doesn't, an approved sub, approved recorded subdivision doesn't change any lot lines, it's the conveyance that actually does. And so because it was never conveyed, that subdivision never technically happened. So there is a recorded subdivision for that, but it just never happened, so.
And with that approved plan, when they buy the property, could they access that plan then?
Yeah, it's recorded at the courthouse.
So they got on the plan?
They have a vested right to that development.
As it was.
It's a slightly different lot because then later they sold it to the Blue Mountain Group. That's the Shippensburg Physical Therapy people and they changed the lot line. So now it's a different lot. So they wouldn't be able to build it exactly as previously approved at this point. They would have to get, go through a new plan. But that plan, I have a feeling that that plan was probably designed around our current zoning ordinance because it was in place at the time, so that's probably why they put the parking in the rear at the time.
I agree with, oh, sorry. I agree with Nick completely and also the safety aspect of having people back out of what are, you know, narrow garages onto a bike loop and pedestrian traffic with people going. If the station's eventually built there, there's going to be more foot traffic. There's been other things. We're not far from SCAP, you know, people do walk, kids are taking the bus right there.
So, so, sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, no, that's all. I just, I, I have a lot of reservations about those front garages being the.
Yeah, and Jenny brings up a good point because there is, there's two part, two reasons why our ordinance has that rule. One is to get the cars in the back just for aesthetic reasons. The other is because of the curb cuts, how many access points are across there? So the county goes on, the next couple of comments, it talks about streetscape overlay sections where the parking has to be located behind or to the side of the buildings. And they say here F is limit new curb cuts within existing sidewalk network. So they think that that directly conflicts with the legis, the standards and legislative intent of that section. So that is the other concern with, that the county's bringing up in their, in their letter. So there's several different concerns with that. So we'll, we'll share those. Anybody else have anything? It sounds like it's pretty much unanimous that you kind of agree with the county's comments there on that.
Uh, yeah, I agree with everyone on the, try and, try and get it to the back. I would hate to have to do a variance for this. But I'm wondering about how that driveway elimination works, if Spectra Code has a right-of-way there?
Yeah, good question. So that's the big thing that's on my letter, but we can jump to that right now. Is everybody aware of what's going, what they're proposing with this development? That the access point out on the Water Street is being proposed to be eliminated? And whenever I brought it up, they pointed back to a plan that was improved in two thousand two. So this has been before that townhome development that I was talking about. This is about twenty-three years ago. It said, had a note on the plan and this is going to, something I'm going to kick over to the solicitor. I'm not sure if you had a chance to take a look at this yet or not, but, and I don't expect you to give, give an answer here today. But so in two thousand two, there was a plan that said something to the effect of with, upon conveyance, this access drive will be eliminated. That parcel had been then conveyed more than once, once to SPG Capital or whatever that, what townhome was. Again, then to Blue Mountain Group and then now to the Simrad Development. Never in any of those conveyances has that access drive been eliminated, physically eliminated, still exists as we know it today. And since then, my concern is since then, the borough has permitted some other uses out there, like the distillery, for instance, and another development at Spectra Code. And so my, their, their hope is that that note still allows them to be able to eliminate that access drive. They suggest that the property owner of Spectra Code is okay with eliminating it. Of course, one of the other things that I'm going to ask for is an easement from the neighboring property because they have to move some other stuff on the neighbor's property. So they need an easement from him and they'll be able to do that, a pipe, stormwater pipe, a water line, several things. They're going to need to get an easement. Essentially, him signing that easement, giving them rights to get on his property to do this construction will be him saying, yes, I agree to eliminating this access drive. But I want to see, you know, aside from the developer, from the neighbor, the Spectra Code owner, being okay with eliminating it, is the borough okay with eliminating the second access point? You know, is the fire department okay with it? It is, so, and, and can they either go back to that note from two thousand twenty, two thousand two? Or can they just propose it as part of this development? Either way, could they get to the point of, of eliminating that access point?
And this is your note twenty-five?
My note on my letter is twenty-five, correct?
Solicitor. Part of why you do a title search whenever you buy property is to make sure that there's no subdivision plans or easements or any of that out there that have notations on plans like that because essentially the borough or municipality has spoken to a particular issue and said, we want or we're going to require that to happen. It's an interesting situation if the borough has subsequently given land use permits or approved land development plans and essentially didn't enforce that notation. I think the borough has more legs to stand on than if it, if there was a notation on a plan that was the opposite that said that this property will be subject to an easement and there was nothing actually signed between the parties. To the extent that everybody's on the same page, that's good, and it sounds like that might be the case. I don't know that the borough has necessarily waived its ability to require termination, that easement, assuming that's what it still wants. It may or may not. And I think you bring up a good point relative to emergency service concerns and access. I mean, if people want to get in the back, I mean, if there's a fire, people are going to do what they're going to do. Fire truck's not going to look and see exactly where an easement is. They're going to run to the back of the building if they have to. I think there's an argument to be made on each side, but I would not necessarily assume that that notation from a plan in the early two thousands is null and void just because other conveyances of surrounding properties and other developments on those properties has happened. Certainly, anybody who bought those would have had the opportunity to see that on their plan and arguably challenge it at that time.
This sounds to me though a borough council issue. No?
I'm not sure.
What's planning commission? Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's not a dedicated, that
Oh, okay.
access drive is like not a public drive, it's a private drive.
Oh, I see, okay, nevermind.
Is there even an easement or right-of-way? Or is it just, you're talking about just a paved?
This is called paved driveways, to be demolished. I don't know of any easements. If, if one exists, I'm not aware of it.
Adam, I'll throw in a curve. How about potential for the property to then to obtain a prescriptive easement based on historic use?
Oh, it could be permissive. I mean, if you've been doing it and nobody's objective, objected for a period of time. I mean, I don't think, I'll be put it this way, I don't think the borough or the planning commission wants to get involved in this as the potential to be a private dispute, you know?
Well, I think my only thought to comments back to the owner is that it doesn't seem likely that, or at least we would recommend a variance for parking in the front. And so according to how their, how the borough ordinance is written now, they need to find a way to get parking in the back or the side. And the easiest way to do that seems to be have a driveway to the back and then parking in the back. And so if that's going to have to be put in eventually, you know, do you want to go through demolishing an existing way to do that? Or can you just then change your plans, use that to get to the back parking and then you're good to go? So I don't know how they would feel about that, but I don't think that, I mean, the zoning hearing board, I guess, would make their own decision on that kind of ordinance and whether they think they could win that. But, you know, from, from the perspective of how the ordinance is written, they need to get parking in the rear or the side. Side seems less likely because they have to eliminate quite a bit of unit, so rear seems more likely and, and then you'd want a driveway. So that would be my comment to them if they were here.
Yeah, and, and they may certainly kill two birds with one stone there, put the driveway in the back and keep the. Whenever they came to us a year ago, I still have the sketch plan, it wasn't really a sketch plan, you know, formal sketch plan, but they had a little plan that actually eliminated the access drive and built a new one a little bit further to the west of the one that's there. For some reason, they decided that they didn't want to do that, I guess maybe an expense thing. If it's not an ordinance requirement, maybe they found this note from two thousand two that says that that thing's eliminated, so. I mean, yeah, of course, we have that, that other ordinance, the zoning ordinance requirement that may make this a moot point. But then I guess aside from that, if, if they were able to get around that, the only thing that I could think of is mainly is just checking with the fire department. You know, the fire department has any issues with the second access, they have a distillery back there. As long as they can still get, because the other access point's out on Fourth Street. So as long as everybody all the way up to Spectra Code, Spectra Code has some bigger trucks and stuff to go in there and turn around. I remember whenever we did the access, the, the easements for the bike trail, I had to make space for tractor trailers to be able to turn around and back there. So they do have some trucks to be able to turn around and come back out all the way up to the Fourth Street.
I think that's an important, important point to point out that the context of two thousand and two is different than today because of the distillery and whatever Spectra Code has, how, how they have changed in the last twenty years. I'm imagining that this development would not want to do something that would be unsafe in that area. So is anyone object to communicating that as well, like your point about fire trucks?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be up to them and Spectra Code at some point, so.
But, but does that change your opinion about? It was decided in two thousand and two, so it's probably, if I heard you correctly, you can't assume that it's not still the case.
I think before that you do anything with that, I'd want to look at what was on the plan in O two.
Okay.
And see what happened with these various properties around it before you make a definitive decision. And see what happened with these various properties around it before you make a definitive decision on this.
Well, we're not making one today, so just communicating.
And, and you don't need to, yeah, yeah.
Any further discussion on that point twenty-five? All right, what's next, Chad?
They made a comment about the depth to width ratio of new laws, not generally. They, the heater ordinance uses that word generally greater than three to one. That's usually the way these townhome developments are, the little shotgun thing, so it's really hard to abide by that requirement. I personally don't have any major objections to it, but county planning said that the planning commission may need to determine whether the proposed lot, the depth wish ratios are appropriate. So do you have any opinions about that?
Stephanie?
That, that was something I, I wanted to get the parking fixed first because it may impact that. That seems like a more practical variance, at least to, from what I've seen from zoning hearing boards, how they act is.
And that's a, that's a SADO waiver.
Yeah, I mean, that's, oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, the SADO requirement, so that would just be you guys.
Yeah, and that, there is more than flexibility as opposed to
Yeah, parking.
Ten curb cuts.
Right.
Any thoughts on this with the? I don't.
I don't, I wouldn't have any personal objection with that, I mean.
They're gonna sell them or rent them or what, sell them, I guess.
Seems a little arbitrary.
Yeah, for a townhome development, that's just the way they are.
Well, and I think the feedback would be to the borough council, but to be more specific about the ordinance.
Yeah, in some places it maybe makes sense, but this, in this case, for a townhome development, that's, that's a tough. Okay, so the next one is landscaping. So they didn't provide any landscaping plan. Um I didn't even make a comment about it because that, the county already basically um hit the nail on the head when they just said, we didn't do any review because there was no plan to review. There is a landscaping ordinance, as you know, and it's gonna be very tough. I don't see how they're gonna be able, the way this is shaped, again, this might become, they might be killing three birds with one stone here because I don't see how they fit the, the shade, the shade trees or the street trees in front of this development. There's just not enough space for it all, so.
Now, that is another SE overlay district though.
So I don't. That's back to the variance for the, for the streetscape overlay, but it's our land, it's our SADO with separate landscapers. They have two different ordinances they gotta hit there and there's between the two of them, it's gonna be tough for them.
So on a process question, I guess I'll blame myself on this. When they submitted the application, don't they have to check a box that they submitted a landscaping plan?
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, we just missed that or?
Well, you know, it's, I, I'm not gonna say that we missed it because one of the things I'll note, and I don't wanna throw anybody under the bus, but there, the checklist was not thoroughly completed and in a lot of places, they had sometimes they would pick non-applicable on the right side, sometimes they'd pick it on, like it was either it's there or it's not there or it's not applicable. And sometimes they put non-applicable in different places. And then sometimes they said things were there, so we thought they were there, but they're really not. And, and, and there was probably, I'm gonna say it, more than five, more, half a dozen items that they said are there and they're just not there, so. I don't, I don't wanna throw, it's not our fault that we, we didn't, we were given incorrect.
I just bring up, because a few years ago, we were trying to be more disciplined about making sure those applications, because it just wastes money for them to like submit something.
And John went back to him and said, you need to fill this application before we can do this. And then he did it, they just did it. He didn't do it right until, until now, now we finally are realizing they didn't do it right, but sometimes you gotta dive into the, the review to really know that.
And, and to be fair, a landscaping plan from a practical exercise isn't something that's extremely time consuming. Most of these items can be fixed and don't require excessive um consulting fees and things like that to have to work with new professionals. It is disappointing, but I think after we have an opportunity to speak with the developer, within the next two months, we should have a very firm idea of, A, if this development pattern is going to be changed, if we're gonna be looking at new subdivision plans or if the project is going to, um if it works or not.
Any questions on that landscaping?
There's really nothing else to discuss. Um so from my, on my letter, just a couple of things real quick. Um item number one, they did submit a stormwater management report. Um our ordinance now to require stormwater management to go to the stormwater authority, so I just noted that. There's a lot of comments in my letter. I'm gonna say maybe half of them are about getting some municipal authority stuff, sewer and water related stuff. So at the end of the day, what matters is what we get GMA's approval. Um so I'm not gonna belabor that point. Um we do have comment number four here is about the Borough Fire Chief getting some comments and specifically with this access drive, I'd be interested to see what what their opinion is on that. Um number number eleven is so that curb that we talked about in the north, there's a curb cut for this access drive. And this comes up with my comment number twenty-five that we just talked about and this comment number eleven, but it's currently like paved over, but there is a depressed curb under there. And only part of that access drive is on this townhome development. So what they proposed right down the middle of that access drive is they're gonna eliminate the pavement on half of it. And then, and it kind of comes across as an angle. The other half was gonna stay there. We're still gonna have this little triangle of pavement and this curb cut, this little tiny triangle. So I can't imagine that that's really what they intended to do, if they just didn't get a chance to finish it. Or they wanted to hear back from us first on what's gonna happen with this access drive, but something different's gonna happen with that. So I wanted to just mention that that, that's gonna have to be development on the Spectra Code property. I'm not gonna recommend to you guys that you approve a plan that leaves a little tiny half of a access drive to nowhere and a curb cut access drive to nowhere. They're gonna have to do something different with that as well. Uh, number fourteen is about stormwater easement. So like I said, again, there's a, there's a stormwater pipe that goes to the neighbor, so he's gonna have to be able to sign off on that. Number fifteen is about oh, number fifteen is again with the driveways. I talk about the length of the driveway and it's only a few feet between the front of the buildings and that and the and the bike path. So if a car doesn't be able to get, if it can't get into the garage, it's gonna, and it thinks that there's, that's an actual parking lot, it's gonna be over top of the the bike path. So I did make a comment about that.
I would, I would add to that point. The ability for us to enforce parking in that regard becomes extremely challenging. I mean, it becomes officer discretion because we're not going to be able to engage with parking authority on that. We'd have to have a police officer do it.
Yeah, that was something actually I was, I was curious about. I was thinking about it when I was talking about with Jacob today is can we enforce parking within the right of way or is it just within the street? So you know what I mean? Like if we have this bike trail easement that is given to the borough for a bike trail and for our lighting, can we now enforce that they can't park in that easement? That'd be something else that we might wanna maybe even put language in that easement whenever it's, when it's conveyed.
There's lots of no parking signs and people find a way to park.
Yeah, that's a whole, that's a whole nother thing, but it'll end up being an enforcement issue is what it'll end up being.
I would address that in the text of the easement. You know, whether that, what the purpose of it is and what people can do in the meantime, so that they're not precluding that purpose.
Okay.
And then, um so, so I made a comment about um our ordinance, and we've talked about this before, but it's conflicting in two different places where it requires a minimum of, of four inches thick Portland cement concrete. And then there's places like the middle school and the physical therapy place where we have bike trails that are asphalt, right? So we always have that conversation. I'm gonna suggest that, just like anybody else, if they don't, if they wanna put it in as asphalt, which is what they're proposing, they're proposing each one of the driveways, ten of them to be out of concrete, but then the spaces in between them is asphalt. And that is actually a design method that you're supposed to change the type of material so you can see visually that now I'm crossing the driveway, now I'm not on a driveway, now I'm on a driveway. So that is actually a design tool, but whatever proposing is asphalt technically in between. It shows up as a brick hatch on their plan, but it's actually, they, they labeled it asphalt. So if they're gonna do anything other than concrete, they technically need to get a waiver from you guys, but I wanted to see if you have any issues with them making asphalt, just like the physical therapy place did, instead of concrete.
Thoughts?
I would think that if they're giving an easement um for something for the public good, they should be able to make them halfway if, if it's a cost requirement. Obviously, concrete's a better product, but um.
There's a new Gil section in concrete where it's red on Washington Street?
That's concrete, yeah, that's all concrete.
So can't you have concrete that's just colored differently?
You can, yeah.
I mean, not to belabor this, but I think the asphalt at the, at the physical therapy place stands out aesthetically, but.
In a good way or a bad way?
In a not so great way.
It's noticeable. Yeah, and, and sometimes it's funny because it's, that one's like a little tiny spot right on the corner, so it seems maybe a little bit odd by itself. When you have like a, the North Gexburg Trail, right, that goes out past the county, that makes sense more that that's asphalt. You know, even the middle str- middle school, if you look, it's concrete on the ones, one side. And then the other side, the whole, that whole trail is, is, is asphalt. And one of the trade-offs that our ordinance only requires the applicant to do a um, a five foot minimum sidewalk. Actually, four feet with a five hun- five foot passing zone every two hundred feet. So that was the other trade-off is when we say, no, we want this to actually be a trail, we want this to be eight feet wide. That's part of the trade-off, so we can make it asphalt instead of concrete because asphalt's cheaper. So that's a lot of times why then whenever they do a bike trail, it's made out of asphalt, so they can make it eight feet wide instead of four feet wide concrete. Now, Gexburg interloop is, when Washington Street is concrete and that's eight feet wide. So that's, that is one other oddity that doesn't fit that description I just made.
Is the cost dramatically different?
It's pretty significant, yeah.
Eight foot roller, I mean, it's just quicker.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thoughts?
Um, I don't really have too much of a strong opinion on that.
Now, a pro- a project like this, because of the fact that fifty percent of it's already concrete driveway, I don't, I can't imagine the cost to them is gonna be that significant.
Well, yeah, but I'm, maybe I'm pessimistic on, I mean, that driveway in the front is dependent on them having parking in the front, which is indirect violation of our ordinance.
Right.
So that, I don't know how much comment we wanna give them on a plan that at the moment directly impact, you know, against the ordinance that
Right.
I don't think the borough council, at least from what I've read, is proposing to change that in these new revisions.
Right. You almost gotta assume that those driveways are not gonna be there and it's just gonna be a trail, the whole way, an eight foot wide trail.
You know, variances they might receive and all of that, but I, it's hard for me to comment on a plan that is in direct violation.
In your meeting, you could add that we had this conversation, not only on that, but on the materials.
And the street scape, scape enhancement stuff is, is fairly expensive and extensive too. So there, there's, you know, there's a lot of money tied up in, into that front area. I mean, we could, we could calculate how much they're showing in concrete here with the driveways and say, well, if you're proposing that as driveways, uh why can't you do it? For the public good, maybe that would be an argument, but.
With the, with the interloop, I mean, to me, it's a little bit confusing in town where there's gonna be places that are not just sidewalks, but bicycles are gonna be, I mean, they're already allowed, I guess, on sidewalks outside of that square area, but I think it's for pedestrians and bicyclists to be sharing the same space. It'd be nice if we had a uniform symbology to people that would know like, oh, this is a sidewalk that's gonna be shared with bicycles. It's all this red concrete. And I know that we can't do that already. It's, we've not done it in some places, but I think we have it along Buford and along Washington Street now, and that would be a visual like cue to people, this is shared bicycle and pedestrian space.
Can, can I withdraw my previous statement on the asphalt?
Alright, it sounds like we have consensus on that.
Yes, and let me, let me throw up one other point, and this might help with this too, because this is, and it's not in my letter and it's specifically not in my letter because uh it's not specific to the Simrat development, but the Spectra Code development that just got done a few years ago, you guys approved that small little addition on the side of the building. At the time, the developer and the, the ordinance requirement to build a sidewalk, um planning commission waived the requirement or gave a modification of that requirement to be able to build that someday in the future. I think there was some language in there within eighteen months or two years from notice by the by the borough uh when we want it built. Um so that is still on the table. There is an approved plan with that note that that developer, that the owner of Spectra Code did agree to build his part whenever it comes time. So if this townhome would go and get built, then I would suggest that that would, planning commission would trigger, the borough would trigger that requirement and go to the owner of Spectra Code and say, hey, now we would like you to build your piece of this. So I'm still not a hundred percent sure. We didn't uh like iron out the specifics with that. Our ordinance only says you need to have sidewalk along the frontage of your property, but we're really hoping to have, and he gave an easement, the same owner of Spectra Code gave an easement the whole way back along to the back of Spec- of Scap's property. So who's building the whole thing? And is that whole thing concrete or asphalt? Is also, I think, a topic that we should be discussing while we're having this discussion about surface. Because it would maybe be a little odd if it's, if this guy agrees to build this whole thing out of asphalt and then physical therapy has asphalt and then in between you have concrete, now it might be, you know what I mean?
Where is right of way? It doesn't go all the way in the front of water, right? It goes, it's behind scap and then up to water and not across the front. Is that right?
It, it, you mean that, that easement that was given for the bike path?
Yeah.
Yeah, it goes all the way out to water and then all the way across the front of Spectra Code's property. And then right at that access drive that's being eliminated, it goes halfway into that. So like if you're looking at these plans, you can see that permanent bicycle trail easement that goes out into that access halfway into that. I gave him those plans and he didn't add that, the engineer added that into this plan.
Is the um, is the fact that the borough hasn't easement in place would, does that make them able to apply for grants that there might be available for things like bike trails or not?
It certainly helps, yeah. Yeah, it certainly helps if you have ownership.
Criteria.
So maybe you don't have to, wouldn't be completely on the owner's expense to do something, that part of the trail, potentially.
No, I mean, that's a transportation alternatives or recreational trail project. There, there's federal funds through DOT that Pennsylvania allocates for things like that. We would, the borough may be an applicant, but it would, it would facilitate it. That might be something to investigate and would probably require um the borough manager entering into an MOU with the property owner to facilitate our goal.
So I would add that to your list of.
That's gotta be a half mile stretch.
That's a little bit of a stretch, yeah.
Million dollars?
Yeah, that's a little bit of a stretch back there, so.
The big thing that they're looking for though, for bike trail funding is making sure you have the right of way, though. That's always the biggest problem.
Yeah, that's exciting. I'm, I'm super happy that uh there's a development in, in front of us that could potentially draw that together. We would see a significant increase in connectivity there all the way across Gexburg, pretty much.
Yeah, this is the one piece of the puzzle that's missing right now, because we already have a Gexburg station, they're interested in building it over across the scap property. We got the guy from Spectra Code interested and being willing. We always got it physical therapy, so this is the only piece that's in between.
So can you remind us when your meeting is again?
Oh, we gotta hopefully schedule for this week.
They were trying this week and I haven't had a chance to, I mean,
Those are chances.
It was just this afternoon that they were throwing out. I felt like it's gonna be next week. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be gone on Thursday and Friday this week and I got another meeting I gotta get ready for tomorrow at night yet, so. It's probably gonna be next week.
I mean, you have other comments, maybe?
That, that's it for me.
So it's, it sounds like to Marty's point, without objection that there's enthusiasm, but there are some significant uh challenges ahead. Okay, alright. Um then we're taking no action on it, so we'll move to the item under new business, beyond all boundaries, twenty-six East High Street. I believe this is just to accept the plan for review.
Yes, this is a minor subdivision, it's a parcel boundary adjustment between two parcels. This fits into the ministerial role of subdivision, so I mean, that, I'm not seeing anything that would, that immediately causes concern, so the outfits here this evening discuss, discuss it in more detail, but overall, it's just moving a lot lineup and capturing some parking for a parcel.
So what you're looking for is after we hear from the applicant is to uh pass a motion to accept for review? Sir?
Yeah, well, uh all we're proposing is uh to create
Yeah, well, uh, all we're proposing is uh to create um a lot addition to a residential property at uh on uh East High Street for their own parking space.
Okay.
Right now, they they park there, but it's leased parking.
So given that it's ministerial, you expect that we could move, take action on it next month?
Yeah, I I think you have to. There's nothing I'm seeing that will include this type of subdivision in the Old Town District.
Does anyone have any questions on this or wanna make a motion to accept this proposal for review?
I'll move we accept it for review.
Thank you, John. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion or questions?
I just wanna ask some questions.
Sure.
Um, Ken, do you know, or maybe Chad or John, you know, I was just curious about this parcel because I sort of imagine that a lot of parcels or those other parcels on High Street would have extended all the way to the alleyway. So I, to me, it looks like this parcel was at one time the entire length and then it was subdivided to create a separate parcel for the parking and now we're getting parking back to the building. Is that what you think is happening here?
Without doing a title search, I I can imagine that was a scenario. Surface parking lots have a unique uh commercial appeal, so sometimes it does make sense to have them cut off from the main parcel so you can monetize them differently, but I mean, in terms of the use, it's it's something that it's been, it's been that way at least for long enough for the the tax map to show it as is. So I'm not, I mean, I'm not.
It doesn't really matter that much. I was just curious about that history there. And the ghetto, so Salzman Hughes owns the parking lot and they use it for their and and they can, they intend to continue keeping the rest of the parking as parking. That's, okay. And then I was just curious, this get, what is it, elevated getaways or something? Is that an Airbnb on the, what is that on the front, on High Street?
Oh, I did not look at the use.
It was the hair.
Hair salon?
It is currently, is it still, so it's also, it's still a hair salon. I was just curious why it was.
But there is um a desire to convert that to residential.
Okay, so they must want to establish their own permanent parking situation.
Yes.
Interesting. All right, I'm just curious.
Other questions or discussions? Okay, then all those in favor of this motion moved by John and seconded by Marty to accept this plan for review, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion passes five to zero. We have two announcements. Uh, on October twenty seventh at six PM downstairs, there will be the public hearing for the zoning ordinance and zoning map amendments on which this council or this commission spent over a year. Uh, made the recommendations to council, council held several workshops related to it, has drafted an ordinance, and it is now time for the public hearing. So I would encourage planning commission members to be there, um, and also the public. Then the next planning commission meeting is Monday, November seventeenth at our normal place and time, seven PM downstairs. Are there additional planning comments, comments from planning commission members, starting with Jenny?
No, thank you.
Nick?
Nope.
And I have none. Is there any public comment?
Yes.
Ms. Siperly?
This townhouse development is in my neighborhood, basically, and I also, I think it might have been the two thousand and two plan I reviewed whenever for the county. And there was a loop road that went in there, so the buildings faced the loop road, but then you had the backyards facing the water street, which I thought was not the best. So I'm glad to see that these are facing the street at least. I agree with Sarah that a uniform look for the bike trail would be beneficial. You see it in other places like the Freedom Trail in Boston, it's a brick trail down the middle of the side. You know that that's what it is. And I also, and I think that's what's happening on the station project is concrete. I also submitted a comment last time that um the difference in temperature even between asphalt and concrete is significant. And that's a major pedestrian area there, dogs and kids and all that stuff, so. Um, and then as far as the parking thing and Spectra Coat, I'm remembering that when somebody wanted to do an interior um farmer's market in the building across from Mason Dixon, parking was really the issue that killed it. Because I don't know whether it was Mason Dixon didn't want competition for its parking, but it's not like automatically you could get an agreement to use additional parking spaces. And that entry drive, that's interesting because that's how a lot of people get into Mason Dixon. Um, so and you're right, tractor trailers are going, they go in one direction and go out the other. It'd be hard to turn around in there, but that's just my
Yeah, thank you.
neighborhood institutional knowledge.
That's great. Thank you very much.
That I really do support. The bike trail looks so good over by the post office and you know, now on North Washington, I just think it would be good to try to have a uniform identifiable thing. And frankly, the asphalt doesn't look so good.
Thank you. Is there other public comment? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Sorry, second. Marty moved and John seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Our meeting adjourns at seven fifty four PM. Thanks, everyone, for being here.